Okay, so we are now. Thanks Heather for that reminder. And um the next thing is public comment. Pat, you are the only member of the public here besides our consultant Luke Slamba. Do you have anything to say or are you just here to listen right now?
I'm just here to listen. I just wanted to see how the meeting runs.
Okay, and you are welcome to um add anything you'd like as a question or a comment as we go along. So then we arrive at what is our primary uh interest tonight, and that is the survey and outreach. And Luke is here, Luke Slamba from the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And Luke, you started with some comments about it. Perhaps you could give us kind of a report as to where things are. Um you mentioned, for example, that there were some um registrations, I guess. Is that what you would call it?
Yeah, so we had um looking at the responses to the online survey so far, we've had thirty-three people respond to the survey. Um online, I haven't looked at the paper copies to see if any have been dropped off at the town office or at the library. So there might be some more from that too. Um but yeah, the responses are coming along pretty well so far. Um I think if we keep uh pushing the survey out, um we should be able to get maybe up to a hundred by the time that we close the survey at the end of November. And usually it helps to have a public event like the workshop that we're doing. And then it sort of gets people talking about the project and then the word can spread that way too. So I would anticipate that we got some more responses after the workshop as well.
Would it be helpful to have somebody uh sitting at a table or something wanting to help people? Give them a survey to fill out or have a lot of help done?
I think anyone who comes to the workshop who hasn't filled out the survey already would definitely. I think that would be a good thing would be to just uh have people do it there maybe as we're uh opening it up and everyone's getting settled in. Um and I have uh put together a presentation and an agenda for the workshop to sort of organize the structure of it um a little bit. So um I'm happy to share that with you all at this meeting. If you'd like to sort of preview everything and give your comments um before Thursday and see if um there's anything that needs to be changed. Um and then we can also talk about how the how how uh we've been getting the word out so far. And if there's anything else that needs to happen uh to make sure that people know about this before Thursday.
All right, I think that's a perfect plan. Why don't you share the screen and we'll all see it?
All right, uh sounds good. Um I guess I'll start with the just general agenda document. And then we can look more specifically at the presentation.
Can I just cut in for a second, Luke?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to ask Pat there, have you gotten the survey in the mail, Pat?
Yes, I did. I had to mail it back.
Okay.
It's in the mail.
Yeah, so you you sort of know what we're talking about a little bit then.
That's a little bit. That's why I'm I'm actually here because I just really want to get more information as to what's going on.
All right.
Very nice. Thank you.
Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, so um I was thinking that the workshop could start with, well, actually, I've I've had some more thoughts since I put this together. And I think um it might be best to move it around a little bit, but I'll just sort of explain uh the main components. And then uh so there I was thinking it'd be good to have a brief presentation, um just sort of saying what a town plan is, uh what the schedule of this project is and what sort of things it'll entail. Um and then also a few of the key data points that I did a few months ago in the data updates presentation of the planning commission, just to sort of set the context for some of the priorities. Um and give people an idea of why we're uh talking about these uh topics as priorities. Um and then there are two activities I was thinking could happen at the workshop. Um there could sort of be a visioning activity, sort of like the question on the survey um that asks what everyone's top three priorities, what 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 they think the top three priorities should be for for the town. And there's that list. Um I was thinking we could have big like poster paper around the room uh with each of those topics. And then people would get ten little like dot stickers and they can distribute those however they want among the topics based on which they think are the most important. And then they can sort of write any other thoughts that they have on the posters. Um and then after that's done, we can look at people's top three priorities based on what everyone voted for. And then either have one big group discussion about each of those three priorities or uh we could sort of break the room into little breakout groups to have smaller um discussions. And people could sort of choose which group they want to be in. Um and I was hoping to get your thoughts on whether you think one of those would work better for Bakersfield, a big group discussion or breakout groups based on uh the top three different topics.
Yeah, it might depend on how many people we get.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, if we get we get thirty people, it sounds like three breakouts would be great.
Yeah.
Three people, then obviously we'll just go with this.
But yeah.
We should be prepared to do multiple groups. So if we were, would we then have some of us be facilitators of the group discussion?
Hmm, yeah, I think that would be good. Um we could sort of, yeah, split up and make sure that there is at least one of us at all the different groups to facilitate and sort of take notes on uh what's being discussed. So we can incorporate that into the plan. So um I can, I I think in the presentation, I came up with some sort of uh discussion questions that uh we can use to lead the discussion. So if we end up doing the breakup groups, um you guys could uh sort of use those questions as a starting point uh to lead the discussions. And then we could all come back into one big group.
And then we want to make sure that each of us had a pad of paper in case we were to break out and be able to take notes. Because I think the key is we want to hear from them and record what they say more than us talk.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um I think, yeah, it'd be good to just sort of ask like pose pose questions as a starting point and just listen to the sort of discussion that develops from there. Because yeah, this is it's meant to be a listening event for us to gather people's thoughts and priorities for what the town should do. Um so yeah, that sounds good. We can sort of leave it open based on how many people show up, whether we do breakout groups or a big discussion. I think that makes sense.
And then were you planning to put together those posters and bring them?
Yeah, yeah, so I can all I'll gather all the materials for the different activities and then bring them on Thursday. Um I'm planning on, yeah, getting everything together on Thursday um to have it ready for the workshop in the evening.
Perfect.
Um, yeah, and then so the second uh activity, I think we talked about wanting to do a mapping based activity. So I was thinking we could have two poster sized maps, one of sort of the Bakersfield Village Center and then one of the whole town. Um and then the we could have different color, we could use some more of those dot stickers. Um and there's this framework from uh the Vermont Planning Manual that I think would be helpful. In this instance, they have this maintain, evolve, transform framework for getting people to think about um how they want their community to look. So basically, one one color would be what do you like? One color would be what would you what do you like, but you would like to see some extra changes there that could make it better. Um and then another color would be what things are you concerned about that need to be sort of transformed in the town. Um and so people could write on the map or use post-its to leave comments and then um use those you use those dots to sort of see overall what areas of town people are concerned about, uh where improvements need to be made and what people like in the town. And then after we do that, we could sort of have a group discussion about um what 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 everyone's thoughts were.
Yeah, and again, you're gonna bring these maps. And are they available to stay with us so that we could maybe get permission to leave them here or even leave them up here? So that as we proceed with the actual revision, we have those maps in large form to help us see things as a group.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um you guys can definitely hang on to these maps afterward and uh leave them at the office or do whatever you want with them. Um and then, yeah, I'll plan on after this event and after the survey is closed, um I'll sort of do a summary of all of the public feedback um that we've received through those different things. And so that can sort of be our starting point when we're thinking about drafting the plan, sort of looking big picture um from from the event and the survey, what were people talking about? So that'll all all these things will be incorporated into that uh report later on.
Okay. And then um it came to mind oddly after all of our planning. But there were uh some topics that I sent an email out a couple of days ago about the question of whether Bakersfield would be better served by a planning commission and design review board versus a planning commission and a zoning board of adjustment. And um is that something that is incorporated into your um outreach agenda? Or could we add it? Because while we can deliberate on it here in our meetings, it would be nice to hear what the community thinks about those because they're really large items.
Yeah, and if I could jump in here, the select board has already said they want to look at that very seriously, getting away from the ZBA. Because we've we've had some difficulties with that with that setup. So they've actually asked me to, and it was already on the agenda, so I didn't need to, but that's something that the select would like to pursue. So I'd like to get some feedback. And maybe this isn't the right format, but maybe we should do it at a select board meeting.
Yeah, um my initial thought on that is that I think um like that's sort of like a procedural decision that the town can definitely make. I think it's good that you want to seek public feedback on that. Um I think it might take a lot of explaining uh the differences between those two systems and what each of them are to give people enough background to sort of have an opinion on it and make an informed decision about it. Um I think during this event, we're sort of going to be doing a lot of explaining already about uh what a town plan is and what's going on with this project. And I think it might be best to do that discussion separately, just to not uh confuse people too much. Um since since that doesn't really, that that's something that can happen separate from the town plan update.
I mean, technically, they have to move on it because we no longer have a ZBA. Once I resigned, it dissolved. So there is no ZBA. So you have to either bring on more ZBA people or switch to the development review board. You know, that's those are the only two choices. And specifically in the Bakersfield guidelines, it specifically says we have to go to a development review board. Design review board is actually like Burnton area. It's not something that in our current bylaws that we can do. So we see a development review board or ZBA, our ZBA is resolved or dissolved. So technically, we're in um limbo and we could be fined by the state, I guess, because we have to have that board um already in existence. So um I'm not going back to a ZBA board, but I'd be more than happy to be on a development review board. And I think that's what the hope was is that the planning commission would 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 do both.
Hmm, yeah, and I think that's not a decision that you necessarily need a lot of public feedback on since it's sort of just about the operations of how the town government works. I think if if the town says the ZBA system is not working and we should go to a DRB system uh because that will be more efficient, I think that uh that uh would make sense. And yeah, you don't necessarily need um a whole outreach process for that decision since it's technically, it's just like a procedural change to how the government works.
Well, Luke, is this a select board issue or a planning commission issue? I think who makes the decision?
Um, I think I think it would be the select board. Um.
It makes.
Yeah.
So would you be willing to come? I don't want to hijack this now, but maybe I'm not sure what the agenda looks like for next month. But could can I communicate with you to see if you could get get you on the agenda and have planning commissioner as well sometime next few weeks?
Yeah, I think it's a huge decision and it's better for us to do it in the beginning of the process so that whatever ramifications there are are formatted or incorporated into the town plan. And um also, it will likely mean that some things that we talk about might not only refer to a design review board or development review board, but also a uh set of functions that are specific to that form of planning.
Hmm, yeah, I'm definitely happy to attend a joint meeting in the next couple of months. Either myself or someone else from NRPC would definitely be able to talk more about uh that change and what that would mean and give some uh guidance.
Perfect, thank you. I'll be in touch.
Sounds good.
And you 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 talked about um the topics and the maps.
Hmm.
And um then you have some materials needed there. Can you just scroll up a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Um so yeah, this is just sort of my thinking on what we're gonna need for um each of these activities. So this is kind of just my shopping list for Thursday.
Yeah, so I'm just looking around here in our space. And I can imagine that if you could get that painter's tape and we could then stick those up on these walls in here. There's a plenty of open walls. And we should probably plan on getting here early so that we can get the room set up. Because like for right now, I'm looking at the back of the room and it's full of stacked chairs, which we might want to move. Or maybe we can take a look at it and see if people can see the posters or maps by not moving those chairs. But we'll we'll get some ideas here tonight before we move as to how much stuff we need to do. But I can be here as, you know, at least five o'clock on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, I can. I can be there around then too. Um, yeah, I think definitely everyone doesn't need to be there that early, but definitely the earlier the better um so that we can get organized.
And I I I don't really want to limit what is discussed. But I feel like it would be useful to maybe have some ground rules, to be honest with you. For example, I think it might be nice to start off at the beginning to say we want to use Bakersfield Town Meeting um kind of fundamental, which is somebody said something once, we don't need to repeat it. Because that sometimes we get like five or different people, six different people saying kind of the same thing, and we're not hearing different ideas. Um, we also kind of like if somebody said something that before we hear them with another issue or another question, we might hear from others first. If there are no others, then we can listen to that second person. Are you comfortable? Uh and then the third thing I thought was maybe we could say we'd like to try to end this at like nine o'clock.
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah. Uh, yeah, it starts at six. So, yeah, I mean, if if there is that much discussion, I can't imagine like, yeah, definitely, we would want to end it by then. We'll see if there's that much discussion, but yeah.
There's already thirty people that have signed up through that survey monkey that I put out. Or are you coming to the community dinner? And so there's already thirty people come saying they're coming. And that's only limited to people who have seen that link. Um I did uh the principal of the schools, he posted it as well on on um in their publications and on the board. So we might start getting in a few more. I keep bumping it on on the Facebook page every so many, you know, days. I'll bump it up a little bit to get some more. But I was really surprised that we already were above thirty.
That's great.
And that's not even including us.
Yeah, yeah, that that was gonna be my next question was sort of, do we have a sense of how many people are gonna come to this based on uh what we've distributed? And it sounds like there's been a pretty good uh response so far. Um, I guess something else to think about is, is there anyone else who, if there are people in the community that have sort of like strong opinions about things and that's sort of already something that's known about, it might be helpful to like personally invite them so that like later on in the process, people aren't like, uh, you know, why didn't I know about this thing that was going on? Uh, it can sort of just be helpful to bring those people into in the beginning. I don't know if there's anyone in the town like that, but.
Everybody in the town has strong opinions until only when it when all of a sudden it hits, then all of a sudden like everybody's got a strong opinion. Unfortunately, unfortunately, right? You know, you hear it.
And then another topic that I sent to everybody for us to consider tonight for this outreach and maybe as you recommended for the DRB discussion, it might not be the right place, but I'd like to get your opinion. If this um idea of our town plan being accepted by the state for having a positive determination of energy compliance. I noticed that when we voted last week at the Northwest Regional Planning Commission on the um high gate town plan revision, that that was a separate vote. And Catherine noted that that's likely to give the town opinions about energy projects that go up in the town some more gravity, more weight versus if we didn't have that. Because I I I think that that's a valuable asset for the town plan to actually give the town primarily as a whole, but the select board especially.
Yeah, and that's something that we'll be able to decide when we start working on the plan is whether uh you want to incorporate an enhanced energy plan into the town plan update. Um, that's sort of the component that would give your plan more say in state energy proceedings. Um, and that the that's sort of the the piece that gets decided separately from the town plan is the determination of energy compliance. So um, yeah, that'll definitely be a discussion when we start drafting and talking about the energy chapter and whether we want it to be an enhanced energy plan. I don't recall if you guys have one in your plan, in your current plan or not.
I I I do, I can I can look it up while we're uh here.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at it.
Oh, okay. Um, I I I know that we're very um interested in developing it, but I it was so long ago that, you know, seven years, I don't think that it has all of the components that the current enhanced energy.
Okay. Yeah, we do. We do have one, so.
Yeah, yeah, your 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 energy chapter does meet the enhanced energy requirements or at least the requirements from uh when your last plan was adopted. So I think when we look at the update, it'll just be a matter of updating that chapter and seeing if there are any new um any new requirements for enhanced energy plans and updating all the data and everything. So that's something that's already in your plan and it should be pretty straightforward to update it, I think.
Good, good. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. And and I didn't know that what we did then was a good foundation for any um additions additions or um strengthening that it might need to meet what's transpired in the last seven years. All right.
Yeah, for for those for those enhanced energy plans, we have like a template that we use since the requirements are so straightforward. So we would just use our updated template for that chapter, I think, and then make any changes from there. So, yeah.
Perfect. Um, and then would you, in I didn't see it in your slide there, do you have like a calendar or a uh that describes? One, it would be important for us to share that we meet the first Monday of the month. And two, that um because of this revision, we're going to be spending a lot of our meeting time with this and we want people to attend. So good, okay, you got a schedule exactly.
Hmm, yeah, so this is sort of my draft uh presentation. Um, and yeah, it sort of outlines the agenda, um what the activities are gonna be, talks about what a town plan is, why it's important, um sort of the key themes that were identified early on, like when we're applying for the municipal planning grant as things that we wanted the plan to focus on. Um, plus whatever community feedback we get. Um, and then, yeah, the project schedule um with the monthly planning commission meetings and when the plant, when the project is scheduled to be complete. Um, yeah, and then I just have some data slides. There's the population trend, household trends, uh age group trends, um commuting patterns, uh occupations of people who live in Bakersfield and housing costs over time. So when I present these, I'm sort of gonna be trying to tie each of these back to what this means for the town plan um and why we're looking at these things. Um, and then, yeah, just the the visioning exercise and the mapping exercise. And then a slide with next steps. Oh, yeah, I think I have it here too, monthly meeting monthly, starting in January to draft the plan. So um, yeah, that'll be good to get the word out about that.
Yeah, let's go, Luke.
Okay, great. Um, I guess, so we have about thirty people registered to come. I was just thinking about some logistics on uh getting the food and everything. Um, and if you all had any thoughts on where we should get uh our food from and what we should have? And I think it would be easiest if I handled that part of it since it's funded by the municipal planning grant. And just for like uh payment purposes, it would be easier to have it all go through me. But if there's like, if anyone has any ideas or like a list of what we should have, I'm happy to uh get everything.
Um, so I was at Costco and I looked at the pies there. The pies are huge down there, so they're five ninety-nine. He said there was like a budget of two hundred to three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Um, so I would, my thought is um maybe um cap it at fifty people coming. I don't know if we'll get more than that. My fear is we would get more than that would be a fear and then not have enough food. But um we know that there are thirty people registered, so you have to at least plan for that. But I um so um. So, um, I had on the list, list, cuz there are some kids coming, maybe like uh, one gallon of milk. Obviously, water, you know, um, and then I think we decided on pizza. Are we still doing pizza?
So, we, we really need to be mindful that we actually sent out a flyer. Cider doughnuts and pies. Better deliver on those three.
Those three, yes. Okay, so usually like Price Trapper will have their cider doughnuts, buy one, get one free. Or they'll have cider doughnuts. So you can um, Price Trapper um, will have those, but pizza, I was thinking. Um, how, where are you in, I mean, I don't wanna send you down to Costco if you are.
Well, they need to be cooked, too. We can't cook here. So, I would say Luke is probably good. At finding something, where, where, are you in St. Albans, Luke?
Uh, I I live in Burlington, so Costco's on my way, actually. Um, but if there's, yeah, a pizza place in St. Albans. Um, I could stop by on my way out to Bakers.
Well, the reason why I suggest Costco is cuz you can call and order that, you know, you can call and order ahead. So they'll let you make that date. You can call and say, I want five of this and five of that, and then it's super cheap. So it's a budget saver and you have to get the pies there anyways, cuz that's the cheapest place to buy.
Yeah, I guess I'm worried with the drive to Bakersfield, they might get kind of like cold on the way. I don't know.
Um, I thought about that and, but if you put towels on top of them, like if you stack them all together and then put a blanket or a towel on top of them, you'll be fine. I bring them, I bring home. I bring home pizzas from Costco and they stay warm.
So, so Luke, why don't we invest in you, um, since you're driving and buying and picking up? You think about, maybe you could go to Costco and get the pies and cider doughnuts. And maybe water um, for drinking and then. Stop at someplace that can get you pizza. And here warmest, the best that's possible.
Yeah, and I think, I know Bakersfield doesn't have any like local within Bakersfield options, but it'd be nice to support like a somewhat local.
Yeah, I like Memos has always done a good job with the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. When we ordered pizza for meetings and you might even, because you deal with them so often, get a decent price.
Yeah, yeah, I I can check in with whoever does that ordering at our office and see what they usually do.
Memos, um, yeah, and they have that one in St. Albans, too. Uh, that, what's that one in the plaza? Um. Pie in the sky. Oh, my gosh, everybody raves about pie in the sky.
Delicious, but expensive.
Are they? Yeah, that's why I'm cheap. I'd go to Costco, but you know, I don't care. You know, you guys figure it out, you know, but.
I think definitely Costco for like the pies and the water and the pizza and um. Yeah, to to make sure we're saving money and then, or wait, the pies, the water and.
They won't have cider doughnuts.
Yeah, well, I know there's, there's a couple of places in Franklin County that are supposed to have good cider doughnuts, too. Um, someone brought some to our office recently and I forgot the name of the place, but they're really good.
Hartman, Hartman's has really good ones. Hartman's area, one oh five.
Are they still open right now? I think.
Help Luke.
Yeah.
For example, if we're talking about three different places. Let us know and maybe we could split this up because if we start to go three different places, there's no doubt. You're gonna have difficulty with either arriving on time or having warm pizza. And. Obviously, we hope that we have. Good food when people arrive.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I I'm gonna plan on doing the pizza last so it stays warm and then I have, yeah, pretty much the whole day before the event. Blocked out to sort of run around and get everything.
But you're, you're, you're our professional hired for this.
And don't forget plates, napkins, cups, spoons, forks. Just to heads up on that. I'm cheap, I'd go to the Dollar Tree to get those.
Yeah.
I'm frugal, but you know.
Yeah, or I could just go to, yeah, Dollar Tree or like the St. Albans Walmart or something.
Price Trapper definitely has the cider doughnuts if you can't find them anywhere else.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that'd be a good backup. I'm not sure if it's like the end of the season for those uh.
I mean, if you wanna go up to Stoke to the. They have the best cider doughnuts, like, oh, mama, I love cider doughnuts.
Yeah, Cold Hollow, I started here.
Yeah, Cold Hollow, that, what, what would have happened if Bakersfield had said yes to Cold Hollow? I'd be living in Stoke now because I couldn't afford Bakersfield.
Yeah, I just wanted, that's, that's all I have sort of wanted to do is figure out the logistics of food and materials and everything, so um. Yeah, I think, I think we're in a pretty good spot. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that you guys wanna discuss.
So I was just pulling up the fly, uh, the survey. And um, you know, we had uh, gone through that last time. And you sent us back, I guess, a revised version. And I think it looks great, appreciate your effort, especially to get it onto two pages, so it could be front and back. Um, which is nice to share that we wanna be. Environmentally aware of not wasting paper and you're gonna have copies of. The survey to hand out. And then um, maybe some pens or pencils. Not everybody carries them around.
Yeah, I would definitely wanna have those.
Yeah, um, and then we'll um, as Heather suggested. We'll make sure that everybody that's coming in that hasn't filled one out, does get one to fill out. And we'll have like a box that we can set up for completed surveys to go into. I think it's good if you do that. To make it look private. In other words, you know, it doesn't have to be as elaborate as a ballot box where it's just got a slot, but something that. Kind of um, helps people feel like that what they're putting in there is not. Likely to be stared at by people. Yeah, yeah, the more people feel that their opinions are being protected. I think the more surveys will get.
Yeah, yeah, we could have sort of a box where people submit them or they could even just like hand them to one of us and we could take them.
Yeah, I I was just looking in here and there's a number of cardboard boxes. Maybe we can find something and we can literally put a slit in it and um, maybe people can drop them in there. Um, so that it's big enough to make it easy to go in, but people feel like their anonymity is protected at least. Until we read them and. Of course, we're not asking for their names, it's really. When the people put them in, that's the time that they're feeling a little bit. Um, vulnerable to that.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
And with the way that we have our room set up here, um, you'll be seated where we are. Presenting and you want us to be with you at that same time?
Yeah, that could work. I was just thinking about sort of tables, we're, we'll probably need some table space to put the food out. Um, I'm not sure if there's any other tables in there other than the one that you're sitting at right now.
We'll, we'll, we'll consolidate so that we don't need to. You know, if we can get, there's, there's at least one free table here, that's a free table there. There's a third one in there. I think we've got probably three minimum free tables. But I can bring a fold-up table.
I have two of those that I could.
You've got a couple, so those of us that have those kind of portable, got a little handle, fold-up. Table, we'll bring them and then we can always, if there's too many, just set them in the corner, but. That's a great idea. Everybody remember to bring some tables. There's plenty of chairs here. Um. And I guess the sound system should be fine, people can look at the little screen.
We need to video that or?
Yeah, we'll have, what what we'll do is we'll. Um, broadcast it like every other meeting, right? It it to be recorded.
John wanted me to ask if you guys wanted it set up that way on Thursday. I said most likely because it's technically a meeting, it's been warned. You know, so technically it's still a meeting, so.
Yes, so we definitely want it to be broadcast. We, that's too bad we didn't put it on the flyer, but I actually. Oh, more people come than, oh, I won't come, I'll, I'll do it online and then they forget to do it online. It's easy to get wrapped up in other things when you're not physically at his face.
Just a thought, when we do the setup. We can avoid a row of people up front, talking at a group of people. It, it doesn't feel like a discussion when it's sort of us and them.
Well, maybe we can get rid of the tables altogether. And all we do is we just stand together or sit together and then one, maybe you just talk. For a little while and then if we have something to add, we can do that, too. I like the idea of even just like, we're, we're sitting in chairs. Looking at them as opposed to having the table, but I guess we'll figure out though, if it has to be recorded. We may have to have the mics on everywhere. And we may have to ask everybody that speaks to come to a table and sit and speak and identify themselves.
What about um, talking to John and seeing if he can get us a microphone that can move around, so you can just hand the microphone?
We get those on town meeting day, but those are hired specially, I mean, there, there's a whole separate contract for those. I don't think we.
No, 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 just like we, I mean, it doesn't take much to have an open, your own mic, you know, um.
And saying the town doesn't own one.
So, so I, actually, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven microphones here. I think we could put multiple microphones around the room.
Yeah.
And have people come to those mics and we're not going to be sitting like this for the meeting.
We definitely want to involve John in that conversation.
Yeah, Heather, you said you're. Able to talk to John. Could you share with him the facts that this meeting may have thirty to fifty people? That we wanna hear from and that we wanna broadcast and that we wanna record. And make sure that their vo- voices are heard.
Yeah, but I can, I can do that.
Thank you.
Also, we might need to have like a, some sort of way, I can talk to John about it. There's a problem in the past is people can't hear us, so it's not just the fact that it, they need to hear us on record. But they need to hear us in the audience. Um, and so that's a different input and output.
Well, I think that if we do it this way. Um, we can hear you very clearly in this whole room. We should ask John if there's a way to take what we're saying on these mics and broadcast it. In the room here.
These mics aren't broadcast from the room, that's the issue, they're set up completely for recording on the. So you can, you can do like into this, but it's only people.
So the only way we're going to improve people hearing is by speaking.
Enunciating.
Loudly with an outdoor voice. And standing up while we do so.
Yeah.
And can I suggest maybe we have a designated area and just say, hey, for people who, folks that have a hard time hearing. Get as close as you can, that, you know, here's an area where you could be.
Good idea. Front row for the. Wanna hear the best.
Is it big enough in there where we could just do a big circle, almost like have the chairs all in one circle, so we're all facing each other?
These chairs don't circle, these are.
They're all attached.
They're rows of chairs.
Oh, that's right.
We, we, we do town hall in here, we're gonna be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, all we wanna do is ask people when they talk to stand and use an outdoor voice to be heard.
Right.
If we do that, it'll be fine.
No, I just mean like if everybody's facing each other, it's more uh, easier to like, I don't know, get, not get along, but. When you're facing somebody's back head.
Yeah, I agree with you, but it's, it's, we'll see what we can come up with on Thursday.
We can have a big square, like.
You, we, we might actually be able to do a square here. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
At least an open U.
Yes.
Would help with that.
Yeah.
In fact, uh, we use that for a lot of meetings that I do with government and people sort of like it. Because they are actually looking at each other as opposed to looking at the back of somebody's head.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll look at that. I, I think these chairs, although that chair on the corner there, that looks pretty bad. Always, oh, let's fold it up, that's why, okay.
Got a broken leg, it's got a broken leg, but.
So anyway, what else have you got, Luke?
Um, I think that's about it for me. Um, I just wanted to run through the agenda and the presentation and make sure that we're all. Uh, logistically ready to go and see how many people it seems like we're gonna get. Um, it's awesome that thirty people registered. I think we can sort of plan on about thirty people being there, cuz I think. Maybe some people who registered won't show up and then maybe some extra people who didn't register it will show up and I think it might all sort of balance out. But um, yeah, definitely, that's great to hear and.
Well, what is the official registration? Is it what Heather has or what you have or a combination of the two?
So, yeah, it sounds like Heather made a separate survey monkey that's sort of specific to the outreach event. That sort of just asks if you're coming or not and that's separate from the survey, which anyone, which everyone in the town is encouraged to take. Regardless of whether they're gonna come to this event or not, so.
So, can, it sounds like you need to communicate with Heather to identify what the number is up to. On Wednesday or any update on the amount of food and water to buy.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Um, if Heather, you could send me an update on Wednesday if that number uh, has increased at all.
I'll try and pu- pu- um, pump the posts up a little bit more tonight, but my fear is, is like, I'm looking online and it says. Like to feed fifty people, you need sixteen large pizzas and I'm like, those pizzas are like twenty bucks a piece, like. So there go, that's like three hundred and sixty bucks.
Well, I'd, we'll, we'll do our best to. And and if everybody doesn't get pizza, then there'll be some pie and if you come late. I mean, it's like. I don't care what you call me, just don't call me late for dinner.
That seems like a lot anyways, sixteen large for fifty people.
Yeah, that, to me, that's like.
That's what they recommend, cuz like the average person eats three, three slices and I, so I was like, oh. Why, you should, I'm like Googling this now, I'm like, my eyes started tearing up going.
I, I, I can tell you that the Northwest Regional Planning Commission does pizza regularly. And I, I think they have a pretty good means of estimating.
Yeah.
The kinds and amounts to have.
I will talk to our pizza person.
Who is that, by the way?
I'm not sure, but I'm gonna figure it out.
I did look at Rusty's in Cambridge, if you, if you're willing to come through Cambridge with Rusty's, they're um, eight dollars cheaper. For pizzas there.
Remember, you get what you pay for.
Oh, Rusty's has been around forever, that's the previous, um, oh, who owned that for years? Angelina's, that's Angelina's pizza. So their large is like fifteen, where Memo's is like in the twenties for large.
I'm sure Luke has got it on.
Yes. There's, there's probably more pizza to choose from in this country than uh, almost anything else.
And Bill, are we okay if we go above, if the numbers indicate we have to buy a little more? And we have three hundred coming from the Northwest Regional Planning Commission, are we okay? You know, forking over some of our planning commission budget to, to, to make sure that there's enough for everybody?
So, let's. So let's, let's try to. See what we find out Wednesday for number. But I think the answer is yes, that if there are. Extra costs, I think Luke would get what we need to make people happy when they come here. And then we would probably pay for any additional services above what was.
Budgeted.
Budgeted with our planning commission funds that are in our bank account. They're modest, they're very modest.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's definitely room in the municipal planning grant budget to like, there's no. We, there, it is sort of broken up in the contract by different components of the plan update. Like public outreach does have its own sort of section, but those aren't sort of set in stone. So if it turns out that we need to spend a little more on the outreach, there would be room for that in the budget. Um, it just might mean sort of shifting some of my hours around a little bit, but I don't think.
And I really do think that we have to remember, this is not a food party. This is really a planning.
But it got announced as a community dinner.
Service.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 food is just to get people to show up so that we can do the the planning, that's the.
And I still think that we should make them do a survey before they're allowed to.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Yeah, does your survey record who took it?
No, because it's anonymous.
I was gonna say, we could go with the checklist as your, you know, you have to do yours now.
But I think that. It's gonna be tough to do. Now, the dinner that they offer for town meeting or used to at the Historical Society, was that free? And how many people would go to that?
Need to pay for that.
You have to pay for that?
Yeah. Yeah, it was like ten bucks a person or something like that.
I mean, we'll worry about money a little bit later.
I'm not concerned that we're gonna have more.
I I I, to me, I think it would be wonderful if we found that we had more people show up than we had planned. But we have to base it on the numbers of Survey Monkey respondents. And estimate that there will be some people that. Said they were gonna come and something else came up, some small fraction. Make all decisions on that basis.
If worse comes to worse, I can make a big batch of spaghetti. Get a, no pizza for you, but.
Luke's got a social to get to.
Yeah, that's it. So I think that um. We're all set for Thursday and we have a agenda to set for our next meeting.
What about the minutes, do we wanna deal with that or?
Oh, yeah, they weren't on the agenda, were they?
I don't think they were.
We should make sure that that's added to the agenda. All right, so um Luke, I think we can let you go.
Okay, um, yeah, sounds good. Um, I'm glad we had a chance to meet um and get everything uh coordinated before Thursday. Um, and yeah, I'm I'm excited, I think it's gonna be a great workshop.
Great.
Thank you, we'll see you Thursday.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Right, bye bye. All right, so. Agenda and for next meeting. And we're going to add to that, that we have a review of the minutes. Um, did people look at the minutes?
I did.
Could we have a motion relative to those minutes?
There was two things that I noticed were, one was he had one of the guy's names wrong. It's Jerry Brown.
It's Jay.
Was that Jay or did it Jerry that was here, I'm pretty sure.
He was Jay.
Oh, he did.
Signed it, he's thinking that Jay Brown.
I always thought that was Jerry, but.
I mean, he could be right, I don't know.
Jerry?
It was Jerry.
Yeah.
Well, I would change that.
Okay. And what was the other thing, there was something right in the third of it, that was.
The date was off, like, it said like Wednesday the eighth or something like that, it had the wrong.
It was a Wednesday.
Then it, you, you had the wrong date on it, like. Whatever we had on it was, I sent an email back to everybody, I don't know if you guys saw it, but. It said when, it said Wednesday the seventh. On the minutes, and it's Wednesday the eighth.
Yeah, what's?
So the uh actual minutes say Wednesday, October seventh.
Yeah, I think that, was that the one we? Were we able to record that? Yeah, so that first line says, due to technical difficulties, the meeting was available.
Oh, it wasn't, it simply wasn't. So the date was wrong.
When Luke was talking about people that might be in, you know, interested in this, I was thinking about Jerry and Linda. And Amber, Amber showed up the, that meeting, that last one, so.
So Heather, does your Survey Monkey record names?
It does.
Did Linda and?
Linda McCall and Jerry Brown or Amber, Amber Foot.
Um, I know Terry Gates did, um.
You don't have to tell us everybody, we wanna verify three people that were at the last meeting. If, if they registered, because they. Were interested enough to come to that meeting.
Let me see, I'm looking.
And and.
Who, what were the names again?
Jerry Brown. Linda McCall. Amber, Amber Foot.
Nope.
You'll see some of those people, won't you? You can tell.
Yeah, definitely not any of those. Um, do you want me to reach out to them?
Well, Gary, Gary probably.
Get away from your daughter.
Let's see Linda probably too, won't you? Will you see Linda before uh went Thursday?
Yeah.
You tell her about this? On Thursday? Tell Amber too?
Okay.
Thirty-five.
And and Jerry, who can, can you notify Jerry, Heather?
I can't, who is Jerry?
Okay, so Gary is gonna notify all three.
Public outreach.
All right, thank you, Gary.
So I made the changes on the Google dot com to ask. But I've made the change.
Yeah, I move, we accept those minutes as with those minor changes.
All right, is there a second?
There is, yes.
And uh all in favor of the. Minutes as adjusted here tonight, please say aye. Anyone oppose, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you again for your work in doing the minutes. Want to uh adjust the agenda first for next month. The first thing would be is December first. Okay for everybody, that is the next. Um, meeting date, Monday, December first.
Works for me.
Okay, it's, it's good for me. Um, we would have public hearing opening at or near seven P M. Adjustments to the agenda, introduction of the planning commission, public comment. And then we would, I think there would be a good time to uh review. October twenty twenty-five minutes. Um, we would also add another to draft. Um, January twenty twenty-six, oh my gosh, we've actually talked about a new year.
I can't, I can't even.
Uh, are there any other, I I don't wanna put in here anything that would be unusual. Until we hear from the town clerk that or um the zoning administrator, that there is a hearing.
Can she add, can she add those to the agenda and?
Yeah, that's the agreement that we talked about.
She's gonna send it to us?
Yeah, we send this to her, she hears about other hearings, she'll add it to this agenda. That then will go to the warning. So Tammy will help us with adding potential hearings and giving the warning.
Um, Bill, we might need to, like, are we gonna talk about what happened at the Thursday meeting? Maybe like uh like a regrouping and going over um.
So let's. Before we do the minutes, we will discuss the. Revit town plan revision outreach.
Food fight. How could we have prevented that food fight?
Anything else for the agenda? Great, I like doing this. Um, I just need to, like I did tonight.
Are you coming on Thursday? Should I count you in?
I'm not, I'm not up in Vermont, so I'd have to do anything.
I know. We'll zoom it for you.
Yeah, I will try and be here. I would love that.
Do you have anything to say about anything, do you have any questions or?
This, this was really interesting, I would, I got the information, I got like the notices and the survey, so I'm like, I gotta check this out. So uh I'm very happy to check it out, see how, how things work up there.
All right.
Yeah, I know, this was very informative, it was very good. If you're zooming in on Thursday, you know, how I'm. Thursday evening is a good, a good evening for me.
Okay, it it's the same login.
Same like, mm-hmm.
As tonight, so you're welcome to do so. And and where are you from?
I'm in Long Island.
And how, how, what made you um interested in attending our meeting here?
I I have a house up in Bakerfield.
Oh, okay, great. Do you live here? Do you live?
I'm seasonal, I'm seasonal. So I'm up on Lock Cabin Lane. So, and my little slice of heaven.
Oh, you're not far from me, like, I I, if you keep going past, I'm that greenhouse right on that bend. If you keep going past yours towards Ennis for uh Montgomery.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not far from you at all.
Yeah, I'm up, I'm, I'm across from Matt Murphy. But at the top of it.
Oh, wait, I think we've met. I think we met, yeah. I think so, yeah.
The Bakerfield, the small town.
It's lovely, I really, I love it, it's, it's such a nice place, you know, but unfortunately I have to have employment and. So I only get up there occasionally, so, but we love it up there. So, thank you for having me, I really appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. So I guess with that, we should probably. See if there's a final motion here.
Yeah, make a motion to.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, can.
And um all in favor of adjourning at eight thirteen P M, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned, thanks everybody, great meeting. Been a lot done in a little time.
See you Thursday.